Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, with that, let's start with the August 2025 financial report. Mr. Treasurer, would you like to lead the way?
Be delighted to. Thank you very much. So, the financial report is for the first two months of the fiscal year, so that's approximately seventeen percent of the of the year. Revenues, they routinely come in at different periods throughout the year. So, the first major revenue stream is expected in November on an annual basis, and it's about a third of our total revenue that will come in then. So, there's been very little activity on the revenue side in the first couple of months, just at three percent of the overall annual budget. Operating expenses, on the other hand, are incurred very consistently throughout the year. So, with the first two months, we are at about fifteen percent of our budgeted operating expenses, so tracking, you know, right around the seventeen percent that represents the first couple of months of activity. And then, on the capital side, we've spent so far approximately thirty thousand dollars, mostly in asphalt and concrete improvements, a little bit of work in the park. And we have a total of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars budgeted annually for our capital expenditures. So, everything is looking pretty routine. It's very early in the in the year, but nothing more to really highlight unless there are any questions that I can answer.
Any questions? No? All good. Thank you. All right, Todd, we'll turn it over to you for your town manager's report. But only if you unmute yourself. We're good, but we're not that good. We can't read your lips yet.
Can't read lips, okay. Sorry. I'll try to be brief as possible. There's been a lot of activity going on over the last, in fact, this will be that report of staff activity over the last two months since we last met in July at a regular meeting. The staff attended a council work session and multiple municipal meetings on the county's proposed workforce housing legislation. We assisted with developing proposed amendments to subdivision regulation amendment 2502, which is designed to support the optional method workforce housing development created by ZTA 2502. And we'll get into more details about that later in the meeting. Staff also met with the State Highway Administration and the Montgomery County Police Department to discuss the status of Bradley Lane, of the Bradley Lane safety study that's being undertaken by the S H A as well as possible speed cameras on Bradley Lane. With respect to the speed study, we have received that draft study from the S H A and have distributed it to the council and to the public services committee, as well as affected Bradley Lane residents. And the S H A has requested an indication of the timeline for our review and ultimate feedback to them, so we can discuss that later this evening. With respect to speed cameras, we've communicated with the Montgomery, at the meeting that I just mentioned, we also communicated with the police department, automated traffic enforcement unit officials regarding speed cameras. They indicated at that meeting that they were, they intended to collect traffic volume and speed data along Bradley in support of the deployment of speed cameras. And they also reiterated that they were changing speed camera vendors. However, they did say that they would seriously consider installing at least one temporary camera on the north side of Bradley in the short term before determinations made on the prospect of installing a camera on a permanent basis. I've been trying to get an update on the status of this data gathering initiative and some indication of when we might see a temporary speed camera on Bradley, but I have not heard back from either official in the police department about that. So, we have enlisted the support of of both Delegate Solomon and Councilmember Friedson to see if they can get a status update for us.
We will be discussing that later on this evening.
We will be, yes. Staff also met with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation to discuss lighting on the Capitol Crescent Trail between Elm Street Park and the C, and the Capitol Crescent Trail Bridge. I've been working with my contact at the Purple Line Transit Partners to identify options for house shield lights, house side shield, house side shields on the two lights that are on the ramp between Elm Street Park and the C C T Bridge in order to prevent light throw and light pollution onto private properties adjacent to that ramp. Again, I've asked for, I, we've received some good information about options that are available. We haven't yet received pricing for either of those options. And so Barney, who was at a Purple Line tour just recently with elected officials and Purple Line officials, did communicate with or speak to M T A's Purple Line Project Director Ray Biggs about the status of our research into these lighting improvements and if there was anything he could do to assist with that review as well as potential expedited review and approval of these improvements. With respect to Corso Chevy Chase, we've monitored demolition process, the tree appeal that you'll hear this evening discussed and reviewed, plans for the removal of invasives, including especially the bamboo on the property. And we also oversaw the delivery of the temporary garage space. That garage has been demolished, and we are now in the temporary garage space. The temporary garage space is a temporary temporary solution until they give us the actual pour borne that we've requested. But we have occupied the space, and the garage that we had occupied for quite a long time has now been demolished. Staff also communicated with Montgomery County Department of Transportation and Montgomery Parks on plans for the Capitol Crescent Surface Trail, both phases two and three. I know you are all familiar with phase two, which is along Forty-seventh Street. The baseline of construction has been staked out or will be staked out shortly this week, and construction is slated to begin in October. Phase three of this project is the trail and the walls through Elm Street Park and connecting to the trail along the Purple Line Tunnel. And that is slated for delivery as a pretty hard and vast deadline of March 2026. The new playground that's going to be constructed in Elm Street Park is also part of phase three. However, that won't be likely delivered until the fall of 2026. With respect to this project, specifically C C S D phase two, we are executing the M O U now. Barney will sign it this evening, and I'll sign it tomorrow, and we'll get it over to.
Signed. Signed, past tense.
Signed. Great, great. We'll get that over. I'll sign it tomorrow, and we'll get that over to M C D O T tomorrow. Staff also communicated with Montgomery Parks officials about the plans for Elm Street Park playground. The final designs will be publicized soon. There won't be another public hearing or community meeting on the final proposed design. However, we, we, the plans will be uploaded on the project website, and they're going to notify those who previously took the community survey and provided their email and asked if they wanted to stay in the loop. And there will be graphics and explanatory text to describe the design along with the actual plans. There will not also be another round of formal feedback in the form of a meeting, community meeting or surveys. However, they did say that they will review any comments received after the plans are uploaded onto their website. Staff continued developing plans for proposed Ridge Street sidewalk extension and parking modifications, as well as West Avenue widening. Dave's met with affected residents to both review plans and gather feedback, and we'll discuss that later this evening. We also continued discussions with S H A and W S S C about fire hydrant relocations along Bradley Lane, specifically to relocate them off of or close to off of the sidewalks. We've met with some resistance from both, from both organizations, S H A and W S S C, about the responsibility that they all assume for doing this. And so, we have decided to, as an initial step, to survey several properties along that stretch, specifically those where the hydrants, in front of which are the hydrants, and to determine what available right away the town has there, and then to develop options for relocation. So, we'll report back to you on that. Staff also communicated with P E P C O about the June storm response and power restoration efforts. And we've scheduled a meeting. Barney and Rich and I will be meeting with P E P C O officials on September 22nd to further discuss these efforts and ways to improve communication and information relay. My staff completed the speed home installation on Stanford Street and Maple Avenue, and we also prepared for townwide concrete repairs, as well as pavement repairs on Leland and Woodbine Streets. We've also completed additional pine.
Todd, when do those take place, those repairs, paving on Woodbine and Leland?
I think it'll start in several weeks, according to Dave.
Yeah, I've sent the list of work and gone over it with the contractor. We're just waiting for them to have a crew that's freed up to actually mobilize. And then, depending on how quickly they can get through it, we'll schedule the paving for when they're finished, or hopefully, it'll be this fall. But if necessary, the paving might get pushed to the spring.
Hope it can be this fall. It's been a long time. Right. Okay, thank you.
Staff also completed additional place pathway improvements, and we've gotten some good feedback regarding the new surface that's been created there. We also continued engagement with the county about the town office lease renewal. We rebid the leaf collection contract and awarded the contract to Hughes Landscaping, which is our current contractor. We'll talk a little bit on a matter related to that subject later this evening. We researched options for temporary fencing in Zimmerman Park to allow for potential or off-leash dog events. We continued our overgrown vegetation management efforts, continued planning for Fall Trash and Treasures event, which is September 27 and 28. We managed the next round of parking permit renewals, assisted with committee and board appointments for the fall, and provided project supports to town committees. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay. Any questions, any other comments? Just a couple of things quickly I'd like to add. One is the, we have the event tomorrow night for the volunteers, and Towns worked on that. And Irene, but I especially want to thank you for your help to organize all that. And as I think some of you know, I will be unable to attend. A very close friend of ours just died a couple of days ago, and I'll be attending his funeral service tomorrow up in Toronto. But Irene will be official host, and I hope it's a wonderful event. And the other thing to mention quickly is that we will be, we now know that the developers of where the current health club, the one life fitness health club is, I've gone to the develop, the design advisory panel, reviewed their plans with them, and are now going to go for a site plan. And they have announced a public forum on October 7th, all right? I think that's something we want to make sure is very well publicized, so that, because a lot of people in town go to that health club, aside from the fact that a number of residents across the Purple Line will can see it. And we want to make sure residents have a good opportunity to take a look at those plans. Okay, with that, we have public comments. We have a long list of things to do, so I hope we can be clear and concise in our comments. I'd be grateful. Please, Deborah, go ahead.
I'm Deborah of Almer. I live at seven two oh two Forty-fourth Street. I'm a longtime resident. I've brought up this issue before, and I'm assuming that everybody on the council received my emailed statement this morning. I hope you've read it. This issue is not going away unless we can just resolve it amicably, and I'm willing to do that. And for anyone who may be listening in, other than the council, because the council is well aware of my position on this and what the issue is about. We have a, an issue between myself as a listserv member of Town Neighbors and the moderator of Town Neighbors. It started over a disagreement over a moderating decision. To this day, I think I was right. My message should have been posted. But I will admit that when we had an email exchange between myself and the moderator, Wicca, that words, you know, got kind of contentious on both sides. And I have publicly apologized for the abrupt tone of some of my messages. I have yet to receive any acknowledgement from the moderator that she did her part in escalating the matter as well. And some of her words to me were rather brusque, and she has not apologized to me in any event. In short, we have a disagreement. I would like to settle it. I don't want to keep coming before this council. I will. I'm not going to give up on this, because it is a matter of community. And it is a matter of neighbors helping neighbors. That's what the listserv is supposed to do. That's what the town council is supposed to do. That's what the Community Relations Committee is supposed to do. And all I'm asking at this point is that I be allowed to post messages again on Town Neighbors. If there was an effort to punish me for objecting to a moderating decision, it's been months now. I think the, I think the moderators made her point. I am willing to work cooperatively with kindness and respect as a listserv member. I recognize that some of my posts have been long, and sometimes I take a contentious attitude, and maybe I'm a square pig trying to fit into a round pole. But, but I'm not the only one in this town who has some of those characteristics. There are other listserv members who sometimes feel that the moderator has been heavy-handed in her moderating, and I've talked to some of these people. I'm not the only one. And if I am made a subject, kind of targeted and restricted in this way, it sends a chilling message to other listserv members. I, I give the moderator credit for the hard work she's done in keeping the listserv going, Wicca. I am not trying to prolong a feud with Wicca Davidson over this. I simply want to be able to post messages again. And I think the town does have a responsibility here because, and I know I keep getting arguments back on this, the town does endorse the listserv. The town posts, posts links on the town website and from the town crier. That's an endorsement. How many other entities are constantly linked to on the town website and the town crier? I can think of Chevy Chase at Home, and I have no problem with Chevy Chase at Home. They're fair to me. They're fair to other members. And if I have any kind of issue, I can go to their board. It hasn't happened, but you know, there, there is a process there. So, I have no problem, and I do say the town is endorsing Chevy Chase at Home, and I'm fully in support of that. And so, but so the town is endorsing the listserv. I pay a very admittedly, very admittedly, very small amount of my tax money goes through the state and the county and whatever to support the town of Chevy Chase. I do not support the town's endorsing any entity, whether it's a listserv or some other entity, that's not fair to its members. I would really like to settle this matter. And if the town council or the Community Relations Committee or any other individuals in town would help us mediate this dispute, this could be over in a minute. I just want to be able to post messages without any restrictions required of me that are not also required of every single listserv member. It's been suggested to me that I sign a document that was crafted by the moderator that's one-sided in its description of how the dispute arose, which makes me appear to be the villain in the situation, whereas a truer description would be, we had a disagreement. We were angry on both sides. We, you know, we had a disagreement. We had a falling out. But one, it's not like there was a villain here, and there was, somebody else was totally in the right. And so, I can't in good conscience sign that agreement. I've been asked to sign in order to post again. No other member of the listserv is being asked to sign it. Well, I think I've made all my points, but I'm going to keep coming back if we can't resolve this. And again, if anybody formally or informally can help us mediate this dispute, so that I can just go back to posting messages without restrictions of any kind that are not imposed on everybody else, without conditions that are not, not required of anybody else, then we can settle this matter in an instant with no, with no further fanfare. So, thank you for listening.
Does anybody else have any comments? Please, Dee.
Hi. My name is Dee Harris. I'm a Ridge Street resident on the corner of Ridge and West. And I've been here on and off all my life. I understand that the council's going to be discussing some more tonight, some of the improvements on Ridge and West. And I really appreciate the improvements that have been decided upon so far. I think the plan for the sidewalk is a good one. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm very grateful for the efforts that have been made so far. I think that the plan for the sidewalk on Ridge Street is a good one, and I look forward to seeing that come to completion sometime soon. So, thank you very much for that. Over the years, however, and during the meeting that we had in June where Barney and a couple of you came to take a look at the situation, there is one issue that I think has not yet fully been dealt with, and I would like to re-raise some of my concerns tonight so that you're aware of them as you have your discussion. The primary issue that I'm concerned about are ongoing safety issues, which really address just two properties. My property and my access to my driveway, which is accessed from West Avenue, and that of my neighbor, who is, who faces on Bradley. We're, I think, most strongly impacted by this issue among all of the town residents. For, actually, I looked back at my records today, and for over eleven years, I've been asking for this adjustment. So, I do hope that we can have something done about it. It is an issue of visibility and traffic speed on West Avenue. And I know, I think there are a number of different ways that it could be addressed. I will make a couple of suggestions tonight for you. But basically, the result is that whenever I come in and out of my driveway, it's dangerous. It's very hard for me to see due to the parked cars on the east side of West Avenue to the north of my driveway. And while there were about, I think it was about ten years ago, there were adjustments made to the parking spot that is to the south of my driveway, which I'm appreciative of. Unfortunately, it is marked no parking only, and it is constantly used by, let's just say, individuals who maybe are not very observant of the legal parking regulations and who stretch it to say that, oh, I'm just standing, even though they've gone into the church with their, or the school with their children. And the, those two areas block my safe, my vision. It's not the greenery. It is actually the cars themselves. When you're, if you think about it, when you're sitting in a car, your head is sort of down at this, this level. And so, it has a different, there's a different perspective. At any rate, the widening, the issue widening West Avenue, I'm not sure what is prompting the concern about widening the second block of West Avenue. But I believe that without spending any money, you can widen the first block, the block between Bradley and Ridge, by simply eliminating the parking on that side of the road entirely. It's going to be the lowest, lowest cost and easiest approach to improve safety in that block, which is where there is often some difficulty. This morning, as in, early in the morning, there was a loud honk, and I popped my head out the door, and there was someone, there was a child trying to cross the street, cross West Avenue to go to the school. And this driver was honking really aggressively at this poor child, walking with her umbrella. And that's just one little, there's, there are incidents every day, I'll just say. At any rate, pass widening of the, of that street was done from a standard twenty-five foot width of a street, which was there when I was a child, to now over thirty feet to accommodate four parking spaces or five parking spaces right directly on the church's side of the street. And those are regularly used, and they were envisioned when the pickup system was approved by the town council to be area, to be lanes that waiting traffic would move into and to pick their children up. That doesn't happen. That, that was instituted ten years ago through a traffic management plan, and it is not working. So, my suggestion now is that two things, three things I would like to request. One is immediate redesignation of the current no parking area on the side of the street that is south of my driveway. There's a short, a small space. There every day are two or three or five or more times, there are big box trucks that are delivery vans that stop there. I cannot see. Cars come off of Bradley and zip around that corner at unpredictable speeds, and I cannot see them when those, those vehicles are parked there. So, that redesignating that no parking area on the west, on the east side of West Avenue and south of my driveway, to clarify that this zone, which is critical to my ability to enter and exit my driveway safely, is both a no parking and no standing to the corner. That was what was requested ten years ago by my neighbors who lived on Bradley. It's in the record. It was something I, I agreed with, and I re-request it now, please. I've had many close calls. One of them was not too long ago. It is very, very frightening to have people zip around that way and increasingly now, zipping down the street from the north. So, so that's one request. Second request is to eliminate the parking entirely on the east side of West Avenue in the block in between Bradley and Ridge, so that two full lanes of traffic are available, available for use by moving vehicles at all times. That's going to make it easier to maintain two lanes of traffic without a huge investment in re-aligning the curbs and all of that kind of thing. And that a clear center line is marked on the road surface in this stretch so that it's obvious to drivers where they are supposed to be driving as they move through that block. All of these things were requested ten years ago, and I would really appreciate action on them now that this has come up to the council's attention. And I, and I underline them with even greater urgency because there have been a number of really scary close calls in the interim. So, just the other thing, I think that there are other many methods or approaches that could help mitigate, and there was, I think it was in twenty, Dave will remember, it might have been in 2015, a parking or a traffic calming plan that the town came up with, which has not yet been fully implemented or not entirely implemented. So, in addition to these adjustments, I would just note that in that plan, there was an installation of a three-way stop at Ridge Street and West envisioned. And I would also request that an accompanying zebra striped crosswalk at that north side of that intersection be installed for pedestrian safety. Second, the revised designation of the no parking zone to a no parking or standing from here to corner. That's really, really critical, because the vehicles coming off of Bradley are used to going much higher speeds, and they, they barely break. And then, removal of those three designated, designated parking spots on the east side of West Avenue to enable the two-way traffic. The final thing, I know this takes a different process to put before the council, but I would like to voice now my support. my support and my request for you to consider installing two speed bumps on West Avenue, one in the first block, parallel to adjacent to my property and going to the main entrance into the church, which is different than from the main entrance into the school. That might be an appropriate location. It would help mitigate and slow the traffic approaching Bradley. And one in the block between Bradley and Ridge, where people regularly go quite rapidly. So I think that all of those traffic calming approaches would be very helpful. And I would urge you to to consider them as in your discussion tonight.
Thank you very much.
And if you want copies of my past correspondence from 10 years and more ago, I'm happy to provide them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee, appreciate it. Okay, are there any other comments from anybody this time? I don't see anyone. Okay, well, thank you. The going a little bit out of order, but because of the schedule of some of the participants, our next topic is actually going to take up a discussion item. Of support potentially having a making a contribution to the Chevy Chase Fire Department. And I understand some people from the fire department are here, is that correct? Please, why don't you come on up, introduce yourselves and yes. And state by your interest, appreciate it.
Yes, I'm John Byrd, I'm with, I live at 4315 Curtis Road, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here in a capacity of being the president of the Chevy Chase Fire Department.
I'm Barbara Bonarski, 4228 East West Highway, and I'm on the board of the Chevy Chase Fire Department.
Hello, I'm Julie Trochio, I live at 4123 Leland Street, and I'm one of the representatives to the firehouse.
John, would you like to go ahead and make your request?
Yes, I thank you for having us back, appreciate it. And in going out of order so we can get to our our meeting. We had come back, we had come a couple of months back to request that the town at least consider giving a donation to the Chevy Chase Fire Department to kind of stabilize the income that we have at the at the fire department. And I guess our request is anything that that you could do to help out would be appreciated. It's whether it's a one time thing or whether it's a continuing thing, we would appreciate any of it, if it's possible.
I know you made your presentation, I think, before we have two new council members. So you might say a bit more about what this money is used for and what some of our fellow Chevy Chase communities are also doing to support.
Right, a lot of what what our funds are used for. The county does pay the firefighters and they actually do a lot of the the maintenance of the building. We pick up where they where they leave off. A lot of its payments for household type things that you run your own household, we we do that up there. The the Chevy Chase building itself, the fire department building is owned by the community, so it's it's owned by the fire fire board. So we're responsible for anything that might happen there. And if the county won't step up, we're in a position where we need to step up to keep that going. So one of the things we're trying to do is build up a a reserve, if you will, for anything that might happen to the building or anything that we might need as far as furniture or things like that for the building. So that's kind of what we're doing. We go out once a year. We do collect from the community. We make a small amount. And so far, we we break about even with what we spend and what we bring in. But if we if we ever had a issue where, right now, we're trying to redo the kitchen, we're trying to get a grant for that. But if the grant falls short or we don't get the grant, we would have to come up with some funds to do that. Those are the kinds of kinds of things we that we use with for any donations we might get.
If you indicate, what are the other Chevy Chases supporting you with? What's the amount of money that they're offering? And do they do it on a one off or recurring basis?
We have, we have two that are doing a recurring basis right now. Excuse me, that's that's started probably about five years ago. We haven't, we've never really gone out and requested funds directly from them. It was something that that they decided to do for us.
Who's they?
Well, I guess it's it's public information. I I don't like to give out things necessarily just because I I wouldn't want to give out what you were doing and.
Everything we appropriate is public, you could say it to anybody you wanted to.
Right, so anyhow, we have North Chevy Chase was giving us $1,500 a year. And we have section three, which is giving us $5,500 a year.
Thank you. Carla is our treasurer, is there anything you want to add? One of your thoughts about how we should proceed here?
No, but just we would need to act on a specific amount, understanding that it would be one time with perhaps, you know, setting in future budgets and expectation that the request would return. In that range that Mr. Byrd described, it certainly can fit within our budget. And it's, you know, we have, you know, some other similar types of contributions that we've made. So it's something that I think is within the realm of what we have done as a past practice. I mean, you have more experience, obviously, three of the five people here have a lot more experience than I do in terms of historically what we have done, but this certainly seems to fall within what we can afford and what's reasonable.
Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we decide to go forward, this actually, we have to have a public hearing for this amount, right?
That's correct.
So what we might do tonight, if we were wish to go forward through discussions, is to schedule a public hearing, which we would have, and then we'd have to take a vote on it. Okay. Are there comments, thoughts from my colleagues?
I just had a quick question, I apologize, I might have asked this before. How much of a reserve do you have built up now?
Currently, we have around $160,000.
$160,000 right now? And and is that, has that been paying towards the kitchen renovation or the roof replacement? Like, what's the?
We will use what we need to use for the kitchen renovation. We hope to get grant funds for most of that, but if not.
So that would be awesome, sure.
Right, that that's our only funds that we that we have control over. If we get a grant, we obviously have to spend it on a specific item.
Understood, okay. So you have $160,000 right now, a potential grant coming in to help with, if not take care of the kitchen renovation. And then therefore, you're anticipating these these reserves would be for the roof replacement potentially.
Right, we figure that the roof probably lasts about 40 years or at around 30 years at this point.
Right.
So, you know, at the at the time it happened, we probably looked for a grant for that, too. We probably contact the county to see if they can put any money towards it. We would then use those funds for anything that wasn't covered.
And then the bay doors, say, you also indicated in your letter that there's extensive repairs needed, has that?
The bay doors are around, I think about 20 years old. There's they're showing some issues. They're extremely expensive doors, believe it or not.
Sure, sure, sure. But is that where the 160 is going, meaning like in the next year?
Yes, yes. Okay, that's our our funds that we have control over, if you will.
All right, okay.
One thought, and that is I've I'm new to the council, but I think we've heard two other other entities that we ended up providing funds to. And it seems like it would make sense if it was, the money was sort of earmarked for something specific, like a specific like cost. That's how it's worked with the others. So. Anyway, that's all.
Any other comments? I guess I have a couple of thoughts. One is that we have a really very excellent relationship with this particular firehouse. And and I I've been had a chance to go over there, I think you have Irene when you were mayor. And certainly impressed with it and and the fact that we've got three residents in the town serving on the board is a very good sign, which I will say is distinct contrast to another firehouse which is nearby. The and and so I think and I think that obviously we count on Chevy Chase Firehouse to be a center for the safety of our community. And I, I, I think you made a very good point, Tambra. But my reflection is that this county is going to be entering into really difficult financial straits. And I don't think any institution can be all that confident of the grant money that they might wish to get. We do have the resources to help out, and I think this is an institution that we should be comfortable supporting. I feel, you know, appropriating $5,000, say, and and I think you are correct, Carla, that if we do it once, we should anticipate that this will be recurring. There's no reason to think that this will happen time. And and while I would, I'd like to know, and you can think about this because this will come up for a public hearing. You may be able to designate the money specifically for a particular thing, make account of of Tambra's concerns. But at the end of the day, the money is fungible. I mean, if it goes to a particular thing, it means more money can stay in the reserve. If you put it, if you put money out of the reserve to fund a particular thing, then our money goes into the reserve. It it all goes to support the firehouse operations one way or another. And I think having a good aside reserve is a is an important part of financial security for the institution. So I I personally think this is worthwhile cause. It's definitely in the interest and has a strong nexus to our town, which is absolutely essential under our policy for support. So I would be in favor of our going forward with with helping out. And I would just ask in reference to what you said at the time of the public hearing, if you could tell us more about how the 5,000 or whatever amount our colleagues agree on would be spent would be helpful.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that if if we had a specific item and we said we were going to spend it on this, I would feel that we would need to spend it on that. And we're we're not really in a position to do that right now. I don't have something that I can tell you that if you give me $5,000, I'm going to go out and spend it on this exact thing. If I did, I would tell you that, but I'm not going to sit here and tell you something that's not true. So I mean, if if that's a stumbling point, we appreciate that, but.
I didn't, I did not mean it to be a stumbling point in my personal view, so I'm happy to see it going to the reserves.
Barney, can I, and and I agree with you, it it's fungible. I mean, if you make a contribution there, they're either going to take from Peter or Paul in their in their budget. So to me, it doesn't, you know, the specificity of the the of what it's used for isn't as important as, you know, as as making the contribution.
Well, I mean, we could come up with a certain.
Be willing to get, introduce yourself and go closer to the mic at least.
Barbara Bonarski, I'm just saying that we could work out numbers for like, if we do have to replace the doors, what is the cost or what do we spend before? That kind of thing.
And anticipate in the in when the when those replacements will have to come.
Right.
See how the reserve would have to be used to make those.
Possibly roof replacement, you know, how old the roof is now and what's its expected life and stuff like that. We I think we could come up with some stuff like that.
I I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? What would be helpful, since we're talking, it'd be tough around the projects, right? I don't have a visibility or understanding about how much money has been requested for for the county and therefore they only gave 90% of that or 85%. Can, is it possible to get, did they, did you get everything that you guys asked for? I guess it's the first question, and if not, oops.
Well, it's it's interesting because what you're describing is what the fire department ran like up until about five to 10 years ago. And what's happened is the county has basically taken over the the expenses. We used to get a budget and we would run that budget and we would and we would buy everything up there. And we would maintain everything up there. The county has moved away from that. They felt that they they would save money. I I don't really believe they are, but they said that they felt they would save money if they centralized all that under the county.
Okay.
So we don't really get a budget, we don't see what they spend.
So you request something?
If there's a problem, we submit something to them and say, this is, this is a problem, we need this fixed. And they will normally come out and fix it.
They would, they would fix it, pay for it. So has there been businesses in the last couple of years given this new system that's taken place where you've asked for something and they've said no? Or they've said 80 cents on the dollar, like I.
Yeah, one, one thing, we just bought furniture for the for the day room, and they did 50 50 with us.
Okay, okay. So examples like that, I I think also would be helpful when having a public hearing to say, look, this is what we're, we, you know, needed it for, the county only came back with half or what, you know, whatever the the examples are so that people can then understand, oh, I get where the 5,000 or whatever, whatever the amount of money is is going to be. That little visibility, I think, is just going to make it a smooth process, just just a thought.
Very good. All right, we're going to have to run to our meeting. Appreciate your help and and yeah, we are inviting us back.
Sir, does anyone want to make a motion regarding a public hearing next month and how much?
I'll move, we have a public hearing on this request to provide, and I think 5,000, do I have to identify the amount? $5,000 contribution to the Chevy Chase Volunteer Fire Department.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye, okay, thank you very much.
And I think that the we will have to, preparation will be important for the public hearing. So we'll have to have some further conversations on that. Thank you, John. Okay, back to our normal agenda. And we'll turn to two variances. The first one deals with 7505 Tarrytown Road, rear and side yard setback and wall plane length. Are the those requesting this variance here, I, we're on the screen. Allison, okay, good, nice to see you. And why don't we start off with you, Ron, to go through quickly the procedure for variance and the order and how we handle it?
Yes, thank you. So first, we'll take the variance request for 7505 Tarrytown Road. The hearing will begin with a presentation of the case by the applicant. And the applicant can please note that the town council has had the opportunity to review your materials in advance. So you don't need to restate everything that's in there, but please feel free to address what you would like. We have received one letter in support from Julie and Dan Canistras at 7502 Maple, that's in the record. I'll note that the applicants did receive a prior variance in December of 2021 for a second story addition. That work was done within the footprint of the house. So that does not create the need for the the requested variance today. Before anyone speaks, please note that you need to identify yourself by name and address for the purposes of the record. After the applicant's presentation, the council members will have an opportunity to ask questions. Following that, anyone else who's attending the hearing that wants to make a comment or ask a question will be given the opportunity to do so. Applicants will then have a brief rebuttal. The record will close, and the council will entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision. The decision is not final until it's written up, and that's a process that usually takes about a week to 10 days. So with that, I'll hand it over to the applicants.
Okay, please. And we have read everything you wrote, so you don't need to feel you need to repeat it all.
Okay, and I don't and don't need to present a PDF or the drawings?
We have the site plan in the record, if you want to refer to something, you're welcome to do so.
I just want to make sure that when I'm describing the project, we're on the same page. So let me know if I do need to bring up a PDF, I will do that, I just don't know how big it would be on the screen.
We're good, we've all seen the plans.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. I'm Allison Price, I'm an architect with MCD Studio. I'm here to present the proposed project at 7505 Tarrytown Road. The homeowner Laura Belandi is also on the call tonight. So she's here, should there be quite other questions that I may not be able to answer, but I will be presenting. The project at the site includes a screen porch, a deck and an uncovered exterior steps. The screen porch is proposed to be built on top of the existing walkout basement so that would not increase any roofing or the footprint of the home.
So that would not increase any roofing or the footprint of the home. We also want to make sure that the exterior steps are added so that the first floor living spaces can connect to the rear yard. The variance is needed for three items. The first is that the screen porch will project 5.9 feet into the rear setback. The variance request is due to the fact that the site is unusually small, odd in shape. And also shallow. Since, and you don't want me to go into too much description, so I can continue, but I'll try to keep this. Not too much. So that's the first one, and it has to do with the fact that the site is 5,068 feet instead of the typical 6,000 square feet for an R60 lot. And has that very unusual jog that cuts out a significant portion of their rear yard. So that's the first request. The second request is for the exterior steps on the side. Setback, the right side of the house, and this is due to the fact that the existing home is sighted. Not eight feet from the property line, but is sighted 7.2 feet from the property line. So to build code compliant three foot steps, wide stairs. To the rear yard, that means the stairs will encroach into that five foot required setback that the town has. That's number two. Number three is that the screen porch creates a wall plane length of 34.1 feet. And the town regulations prohibit a wall plane length greater than 34 feet. This wall plane length is an existing condition of the right facade. So the existing right facade. Has a wall plane length of 34.1 feet. And when we build the screen porch over the existing basement so that the nice alignment of the facades. That is where we are the point one foot over for the wall plane length. The homeowners, you know, want to know that they love the area and they want to stay. They, at this point have received, have talked to their neighbors and have received no opposition to date. And we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. My colleagues have any questions for the applicant? No, we're all set. Are there any comments from anybody, any other, any residents about this application? We have received the support from the neighbor, by the way. We have, we're aware of that. Any other comments? Okay. Anything else that my colleagues would wish to discuss? If not, do I hear a motion? Sir, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much and enjoy your lovely new back porch.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Right. Bye bye. We're now going to take up the pre-removal appeal regarding Corso Chevy Chase. I understand, see, John Sheridan, I think you're representing Corso for this?
Yes, I was correct.
Okay, can we please see you?
Yes. Hello.
Thank, thank you. Staff, do you want to start off with any initial comments about? Well, how this come about with additional three trees at this time? Oh, staff, David, I meant to say, I didn't mean to generic.
Sure. So back in October of 2024, the council heard an appeal for a number of trees in the site. That appeal, appeal was granted and the review of those trees was based on a field survey of the site. Subsequent to that, surveyors came out and actually staked out the limits of disturbance. A few of the trees have changed in condition and, you know. We thought it was important, once the limits of disturbance were identified to sort of revisit it just to make sure that. We didn't miss anything, there weren't trees that were approved for removal that could be protected. So we scheduled a meeting with Corso and people from JFW, the construction company that's doing the demo and the construction. And Davis just to walk along the site and just make sure that everything that. We thought to be the case was the case. And as part of that review, we identified a few trees that are actually hazardous and need to be removed. Irrespective of the construction, then we also found that there were some trees that. One was mislocated on the initial site plan and was proposed to be preserved and has been requested for removal now. In order to install the water drainage system that's required. And there are also two trees that are outside of the limits of disturbance. But their canopies have grown in a way where they're leaning over the location of a proposed retaining wall. And so in order to construct that wall, panels actually need to be craned into place and the pruning required to. Clear the sky where those panels need to go would cause the trees to be destroyed. And so those trees have also come before the council as part of this appeal.
Thank you for that introduction. The applicant, John, do you want to speak on behalf of Corso? Reason for the request?
Yeah, again, we've read the material, so you can keep it brief.
Okay, great. Yeah, so one of the trees, tree 328, white pine, it was. Mislocated in the field while we were using GPS. But now since they've been surveyed, it's more accurately located. And it's completely within the stormwater sewer easement and. Will have to be removed for, for the installation of that. The other two trees that are outside of the LOD, the ones that are leaning over the site. Tree 340 and 342, yeah, they're leaning over the site and to install those. To install the retaining wall, it's going to have to be, you know, clear to the sky and just a drastic reduction of the canopy. Just pruning it back so much can cause. You know, irreversible damage and cause these trees to be. You know. Very stressed and the, the two trees in question and ash and elm are susceptible to pests. So once they're. They're even more susceptible and ash trees in particular. Are susceptible to emerald ash borer, which are present on the site. So, you know. The drastic reduction in the canopy is just going to cause these trees to decline and. So that's the, that's the reason for the request to remove. And it can be a safety hazard after they're pruned like that.
Okay, thank you. Questions from my colleagues? I do want to confirm you will be planting three new trees to replace these, right? Fairly near the location of the trees that are coming down?
That is correct. Yeah, two and a half inch caliper trees replaced one for one.
And what would be the species of the trees being planted?
We are requesting a, a, any canopy, a native canopy tree. So that could be a white oak. Pin oaks, any kind of can, native canopy tree that's on the. Like a tulip poplar, species of those, of those nature.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from residents about this application? Okay, I don't see any. Is there a motion for my colleagues?
I'll move approval.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
And is that with the condition to replant with two canopy trees?
Exactly, with the condition of planting the three trees, which I see it, I said, stated in exhibit, but yes, it ought to be in the variance.
Thank you.
Yep, yeah. And so typically the condition is that those trees are to be. Located at the approval of the town arborist and of a species approved by the town arborist.
Trust Talbert's recommendation. Very good. Okay, thank you. And also we, the, I guess this is not, you're busy, we know that demolition is substantially complete already. I know we were told it would be by October. Is there any update on when construction will actually begin?
I do not know.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can we take just a very short break before we begin all of our discussions? Okay, thank you. All right, let's continue. The first item for our discussion is going to be the SRA 2502, the county workforce housing. And let me turn this over to Irene to lead off our discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Barney. So for the record, earlier in July. The county council passed the ZTA or zoning text amendment that would allow for. Lots that are budding Connecticut Avenue and East West Highway to be eligible for workforce housing multifamily development. Alongside, I'm sorry, at the same time that the county council approved that ZTA. The council members Fritzen and council president Stewart, along with maybe a couple of other council members, introduced an SRA. Or subdivision regulation amendment. The SRA simply speaks to the, the allowable consolidation of lots so that. In this case, workforce housing can be developed. And the proposed SRA 2502 essentially said. We're allowing the three, three, up to three lots that can be combined of eligible lots that are out there. And there's a map. That the county has produced that designates each of those eligible lots throughout the county. Alongside that, there was a further clarification that the lots behind, so let's pretend for our purposes, it's, it's a lot. That is on Connecticut Avenue. The lot that would be behind, behind the lot on Connecticut Avenue would not be. Eligible, even if there is a situation where. Like there's a through lot, a flag lot, things like that. So there's a little bit of cleanup, technical work alongside. This SRA, but it predominantly looks at what will, what will the allowable consolidation be? So our communities, we've been working with our fellow municipalities in, in the Chevy Chase area. To, to kind of come to a consensus about what, what it is that. That, that we would like to see. And I think, not I think, I know as in, in terms of our discussions. There wasn't perhaps a, an understanding on the part of county council members specifically that. Some of these lots on Connecticut Avenue are rather significant. So even though we're all designated as R60, meaning. Average 6,000 square foot lots. There are as many as, there are some lots that are 20,000 square feet. So if you're looking at something as consolidating. Three of those lots, that could be a pretty significant building that, that could be built that would house. Multifamily housing inclusive of workforce housing. So in thinking it through a bit and, and looking at the specific. Examples that have been produced by the planning department. There was assumption made in those kind of graphics that you'd be looking at 6,000 square foot lots. So what we have kind of. We're, we're still gathering information or I should say feedback from the other municipalities, but. What we're coalescing around is what is a, an appropriate limitation from a square? Square foot limit. So not necessarily saying, oh, it's three lots, it should be two. But let's look at the, the underlying assumptions and say, okay, if it's assumed to be R60 is a 6,000 square foot lot. Maybe it's six times two, six times three, right? So that would be, or 6,000, 12,000 or 18,000 square feet. And that in and of itself is a, a limitation that would provide a level of. Of understanding transparency, expectation for the surrounding lot or the lots that are behind. These lots on East West Highway or, or Connecticut Avenue in our case. So put together a letter that the public hearing for this SRA is on Tuesday, the 16th. And, and Mayor Rush will be testifying. We put together a letter that coalesced these thoughts and. Kind of left it open as to whether it's 12,000 square feet that would be that limitation, meaning. Maybe two lots of 12, up to 12,000 or is it three lots up to 18,000? And that way, it's not. You know, you could still develop that individual 20,000 foot, 20,000 square foot lot if, if a developer got a hold of it. But you wouldn't be looking at a 60,000 square foot type of situation, right? It'd be limited. To 18,000 square feet if you were trying to combine or consolidate lots. And this is to allow for, for scale that's in line with the single family homes that are behind these developments. So that's one part of the letter. And the other part of the letter is to. Make it very crystal clear that the whole front to back consolidation, which is I referred to earlier, you can't just go behind and start. Combining lots and keep going, if you will, is made clear that, that those are ineligible and that we're only looking at eligible lots. And the, the map is the map is the map. As of November 1st, 2025, which is the date that the ZTA will take effect. So as of November 1st, 2025, if a developer has. Their eye on a lot that's on East West Highway or on Connecticut Avenue, potentially it could be developed. Into a multifamily development. Of course. There will be a public process. It's through an optional method. The town will be able to. React accordingly, but aside from all that, this is specific to the consolidation. So we have been working, as I've mentioned, with the. With the surrounding municipalities and in addition, the planning department has also. Put forth some recommendations to make it a bit more clear about how the handling of flag lots. So it's kind of. They look like a little flag, just that, you know, you have a little spoke coming off of the. The, the applicable corridor and then you have a, a, a bigger rectangle behind that, you know, how do you handle those flag lots? How do you handle through lots? And they are actually quite fair in, in just ensuring that there's going to be a bit more. Transparency about what the planning board can approve or not approve. So in incorporating potentially some of that language, we are thinking that we would combine with theirs in terms of the amendments to this. Subdivision, sorry, subdivision regulation amendment. And include such things as having a, a topline limitation in terms of square footage. I hope that makes sense. So far. We've heard back from two other municipalities that have signed off on, on this, Martin's additions and the village of Chevy Chase. And we're awaiting because everyone has meetings in different, different times throughout this week. The hope is that there'll be 100% conformance, but what we need to discuss tonight. A couple of things because we have received some feedback from the long range planning committee and the land use committee as well and. You, you know, not only some really good suggestions on, on crisp, crisper wording and edits around that. But then potentially putting in some kind of what-if scenarios. That they thought, well, for example, someone could, could buy a lot, sit on it and then start like kind of combining. Which we, we asked about with, with Ron to get more clarity on the process and, and all of that and. Barney, you can talk more to this as to how, how to handle those things, but. We're, we're still seeking input and for tonight, I think what we want to do is not only gain clarity on. You know, how, how do you all feel about this letter? Where do we want to land when it comes to 12,000, 18,000? And any other kind of edits that you want. So with that, I'll turn it back.
Thank you. Yeah, before letting everyone comment, I'd like to report on the long range planning committee's deliberations on this because they looked at it very closely. First, I want to thank Irene for her leadership effort on this and, and the fact that once again, we look like we'll be able to get. A lot of the communities around us to join in writing this letter. And we all know that that makes anything a lot more powerful that's signed by a number of communities. I'll say in advance that that probably also, the flip side is it does limit just how much wordsmithing we can undertake. Because at this point, we have an advanced draft that other communities have seen. So we have to be careful about what things we, we can change. In any event. There were, the, the long range planning committee considered this very carefully at their recent meeting. They're generally supportive of the approach that we go with square footage. And frankly felt, were supportive that we go to the 18,000 square foot limit, three minimum lots. Basically, the premise being that, that if a single lot is in this range, as we know, are 15 to 20,000 square feet. It's hard to say that you could only combine up to 12 when others are already larger than that. And also as effectively in terms of protecting the level of consolidation, there's virtually no difference between a total of 12 or a total of 18. Makes a little bit of difference in East West Highway, but it makes virtually no difference on the lots on, on, on Connecticut. The, there were three very surgical fine points that were raised, very thoughtfully by members of the committee. One was what, what happens if, if there's a floating zone? Floating zone is allowed under the zoning code. That basically says that the residences or the properties that are adjacent to a property that has been changed in zone. They themselves have the right to apply for a change in zoning. So the question that rose. So the question that rose was if any of such properties that are currently ineligible for this housing, for multifamily housing, are adjacent, say, to Corso, and there are some that are, could they now seek a rezoning? And by rezoning somehow give, avail themselves of the opportunity of, of taking advantage of this particular ZTA and SRA? And I reviewed it with Todd and with Ron. And Ron, tell me if anything you need to add here. But Ron's observation was looking carefully at the legislation is that it strictly applies to R60, R90 and R200 zone. So that if someone created a special and different zone for themselves, for their, their lot, they would actually be not able to, to avail themselves of this ZTA. So it looks like that was a good, very good point to have raised. It appears that effectively, it's not, it's not something that could arise in any event. The second point that was made was, are we better stipulating that the maximum amount of consolidation is three minimum lots, which three times six being 18,000? Or just hardwiring and saying 18,000 square feet? We had gone initially, we had had some discussion about that and we decided to go on three times because it made a very simple wording and automatically applied to R60, R90 and R200 without any, any fuss. Again, this is something that I went over with Ron. And, and first he noted that in his 17 years of practice, the county has never messed around with the R zonings. They are, they're seem pretty solid. But also that, that if and when there was to be any change, the idea that they would open up and increase the minimum lot size in our area is about zero. I mean, if anything, they would be reducing the lot size. And if they were to reduce the lot size, actually, the three times works in our favor, if you want to see it that way, it would actually reduce the amount of consolidation. But it really is, it's, it seems, it seems very unlikely. Now, the third point is that, that they wouldn't go to the R60 and then change the minimum lot size of R60. If they were to decide to change it, they would create a new zone. It would be R75 or R80 or R50, whatever. In which case, they then have to go back and change the whole ZTA anyway. And we'd have a whole new opportunity for intervention and discussion. So again, he felt that, that while, yes, we could change it, we could also leave as is and feel that we are adequately comforted. The third point that was made was a very, very subtle point. I hope I can say it clearly, which is the prospect that a developer would like to combine eligible with an ineligible lot would recognize that actually even today, without the description of eligible and ineligible, they are allowed to combine two lots if they were going to build a single family home resident. And that they could therefore apply for that combination. And having applied for it and perceived it, could then say, oh, well, I've changed my mind and now I'm going to put up multifamily housing instead. And there was some suggested wording to potentially cover that what-if scenario. Here, I think it's really a matter of the politics of it. I, my, my personal view on this point is that it's a very, very remote circumstance. A developer that would basically, with an intent to deceive, go before the planning board and say, I'm going to build a single family home and then get permission to consolidate a lot and then proceed to put up a multifamily house, buy, turn around and buy for multifamily housing, is not going to have a very good reputation in the county. And I think it's just very unlikely. But also, if and when we ever confronted this situation, that, that a developer did seek to combine two lots, we would be able to intervene at that point anyway. It's a, it's an optional method process and we would, we would be able to get there. And if we felt there was any risk of some bait and switch, we could ask at that time for that, that the consolidation could only occur if in fact, upon the construction of the single family home, that it could not be a such refuge to lead to, to multifamily. So I, I feel personally, other ways to handle that. And my reluctance to include it in the letter is, is, this is the political point, is that this is not going to be an easy fight, all right? We, 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 the, the board, the, the planning board doesn't see any reason to limit three lots. And I think it's important for us to be very focused, very targeted to what we really want and what really matters. And to add something, which is a very remote what-if, which suggests that the planning board could be deceived, I don't feel is something that we really want to get mired in. So my, my preference would be not to take that up. Again, I'm very respectful of all three of those comments, but I think Ron has given good response on the first two. And the third, I feel is something that I reluctant. I will add one personal, one point, as long as I have the mic here. I, I did suggest some very minor wording to Irene, where to strengthen the point about the consolidation, to, to, to observe that a lot of the lots on Connecticut already are large enough for multifamily housing. So if anyone does the math and realizes that units, that lots on Connecticut cannot be combined, that is not a move by the town or the other jurisdictions to prevent workforce housing on Connecticut. In fact, it's a recognition that those existing lots are already plenty large on a standalone basis to support workforce housing. So just, there's a minus speaking language that I suggested that. That, anyway, that's, those are some of my points from my conversations with the long range planning committee. And Carlo, do you want to speak about land use?
Yeah, land use, just starting at the beginning, generally supportive of, we shared the draft letter, generally supportive of the letter. Okay, with the 18,000 square foot limit, you know, particularly, I mean, there's a healthy conversation about that. But as you'd pointed out, with several of the lots on Connecticut already being in excess of that, it seemed unreasonable to suggest we couldn't get to 18,000 if you combined lots. Some, you know, small editorial changes were proposed in the letter and you can accept them or not. But, but the point that you've, the last point that you talked about Barney, was similar concern that land use committee had about the possibility of starting with the representation that you're combining an eligible lot with an ineligible lot to build a single family home and then later changing and trying to pursue, you know, this workforce housing. So that, you know, remote a possibility as it is, I find it interesting that both committees recognize that possibility. But I personally sort of have, you know, I agree with your comments on that point. And it, so, you know, that was a suggestion, the land use committee. But as a practical matter, on a, at least personally, I don't think it's, it's a necessary thing to try and indicate that in this letter. As you pointed out, if we get what's proposed in this letter in terms of capping the total square footage, having dates certain on what is an eligible lot and what is an ineligible lot, I think those are huge wins. So I, I think keeping this more concise makes it more powerful. And particularly, as you said earlier, if several communities together are signing on to the same letter, I think that helps our chances. And I think trying to further modify this for this remote possibility, I, very questionable in my mind.
Thank you. Other comments? Rich?
No, I, I go along with both Carlo and, and your comments Barney, about the third item. And it, and it brings to mind the what-if. And I just can't imagine us saying to the planning board, you're stupid enough to fall for this. So, I mean, and that's essentially what we would be saying if we put that in there. So I just don't, I, I, I agree. It, it, it is a what-if, but it's not something that I would put much credence in and I'd stick with the simpler letter.
Okay. Denver, is there anything you want to add?
I also agree that it's better not to put in the what-ifs just because it's, seems remote and it could be distracting. And I only just had one sort of point about the way we're talking about it, which is talking about workforce housing. In some instances, it's more accurate to say multifamily housing because it's not, you know, especially when we're dealing with the duplexes, they won't have a workforce housing component. So, and only 15% of the housing will be workforce housing. The remaining 85% is market rate housing.
So are you asking that, that be changed in, in the letter? Or? Or?
I think, I'm not sure. I think in the title of the letter, it talks about workforce housing development. And I think that.
Well, that's the title of the SRA.
Yes, that's what, I think that reflects the language that's already used. No, it's just more to be sensitive to that when we're thinking about this.
Okay. With that, is there a consensus that we should go forward with this letter? Todd, we all need a formal resolution, or do we?
It would be helpful just to have a motion or you can just note for the record that the letter will be signed with, upon the consensus of the council.
Yeah, either one.
All right. I think we just want to make sure there's still a little bit of wiggle room for some further wordsmithing, but I think we could have a resolution if someone wants to make it for the approval and substance of this letter. That may be the way to phrase it.
Authorizing Mayor Rush and council member Lane to make stylistic edits and that might come up in between now and the submission.
So we're looking at the 18,000 square feet.
Yes.
So that, that language will, yep. The point being that, that you're made is prevents excessive scale in areas that have existing large lots or even a single lot is of sufficient size to support workforce housing. We could say multifamily housing if we wanted to. And.
I, I don't, I don't think putting multifamily housing in this letter is a good idea. I think you need to stick with the.
Stick with their.
The language of the SRA. Tamara's right, but, but it's the county that's playing the game. So we got to play that game.
But the question that I had, because in, within the, the proposed amendment, we do stipulate a, a date.
November, isn't it?
November.
November 1, 2025.
Yes, I, I couldn't see it for a second. And I'm like, I'm pretty sure we did it. But it's not mentioned in the letter as such. Meaning, you know, just, just in terms of an explanation for those who might be reading the letter.
But we do ask, we do say we want clarifications, right?
Yeah, so we.
Do we think we need the date in this, in the letter?
So we say, we believe the prohibition should be, sorry, for clarity and assurance, we request the SRA be amended to specify that eligible and ineligible lots may not be combined and only lots fronting an applicable corridor qualify as eligible. And then we go into the planning department, so.
I think that might be a good addition.
Might need to put in, we're looking, yeah, some.
Effective as, as of a, for a date.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's going to be a problem for the other municipalities because it's, it's all been agreed upon here. It's just elucidating that.
I think that's a good change. But I think to the point, the resolution tonight should be to approve in substance this letter, which gives authority to make some modest changes in text, as we would wish to.
Yeah, so I've asked the other municipalities to provide their, any edits or changes or what, their decision by Friday. So ideally, sending this out to everyone.
I think if we can send our version out tomorrow, preempt some of that would be helpful because I think a lot will may just sign on to our letter and not.
Yeah, I, who else is, who else are we waiting on?
We, we could have, that's a tactical discussion.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's all going to happen this week. Okay. Great.
Great, no, it's great work. So is there a motion for approving this letter in substance?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll, I'll represent that the testimony that I'll be giving on Tuesday will draw heavily from this letter. But I will draft it over the weekend and send it around to everyone for comments. One thing that I want to emphasize in the letter is an idea that Irene had brought up at the outset, which is that our town is on record of having been very supportive of the Corso development. So we are certainly comfortable with multifamily housing. There, I would use the term multifamily housing and are certainly interested in trying to find more housing options that work. So just to make sure that we, we emphasize our own bona fides in this discussion. Okay, good, thank you very much. The next item up is the Bradley Lane safety study. And the, we've received that report. And Rich, let me turn it over to you in terms of discussion and how we want to go forward here.
Yeah, we received the, the drafts.
Yes, the draft, point, point taken.
We circulated among ourselves and sort of to residents along Bradley Avenue. And I'm sure that.
And to the PSC, they have it too.
It's probably their, their.
Their meeting is next Tuesday. So we'll discuss it next Tuesday. Also, I'm sure the state highway administration wants a response from us. So we, we, we can't Terry too long on this. The residents are going to get together on September the 30th and have a, have a discussion here at the town hall about, about the letter. So I expect we'll get some, we'll be able to provide some comment by early October to, for us to consider sending to, to the state highway.
We can marshal all that together by our next meeting on October 8.
I would think.
That'd be great, because if we could consolidate it, then we can be, tell, tell the state that we'll be able to respond to them subsequent to our next council meeting.
I, I, I would think so.
Okay, that'd be great, good. Any, any preliminary comments you wish to make about the draft report?
No, in general, I think everybody's been fairly favorable with it. But again, we, we, we need to get the input from the residents along.
Grant, did you want to make a quick comment? You're, I'm sure. And if you have to say something about the firehouse, you can say that too.
Sorry, Grant Davies, 4313 Bradley Lane, Quarter East. Just on, I totally agree with what Chevy Chase was asking for. And I could make additional arguments for why, along the questions you were asking. It's, and Barney mentioned, it's likely based on the feds cutting back on grants and on the financial situation that they're not going to have as much free cash flow as they will likely need in the future. So I was going to be, I'd be supportive of that. On, in terms of Bradley, we've organized the meeting, as Rich said, for September 30th here, 7:00 PM. I think we can get our comments together. I would, you know, I've gone through it a few times and I was pleasantly surprised. Let me put it that way with what they suggested. I think there's some things that push the bounds. I did have a question, given it's Bradley, is there any effect on the village? And that I didn't know.
They, they, they actually, it's an interesting little factoid. Chevy Chase Country Club is not in the village.
Oh, okay.
Then it is, the country club is in unincorporated Montgomery County.
Okay, so that 15 feet that's in the village, in the club, that is, is not part of the village, that was.
That's right.
Okay. So that answers my question. I'll let everybody know because it was a question that came up. So unless there's any other questions, I think.
No, that's fine, thank you.
We should make it by October.
Great, good, good. And one other item while we're talking about Bradley, let's talk a little bit about the speed cameras. The, Todd referred to this, I'm going to the next item here. Is there anything else, by the way, on the study? I think we're all, we're good, okay. On the speed cameras on Bradley, Todd touched on this in his initial comments. But I want to bear down on the point that we really are pressing the enforcement, the automated enforcement unit of the Montgomery County Police Department to be responsive to us. We've had to get back in touch with Jared, delegate Jared Solomon and with our council member Andrew Fritzen, both of whom are very willing to help, to put for pressure on them, both to measure the traffic again and to put in a temporary camera. The point that I'm concerned with is, and I agree, there are a lot of things in the in the study which are very helpful, but we don't know how long it's going to take to execute them. And we would really like to have something happen soon. And it may well be a temporary camera. So we, it is our intent to continue to press to try to get that. In the meantime, though, Todd, is there anything else you want can report about your discussion with other vendors in the event that we ultimately go forth with a camera, but not through the county, but instead directly?
It's difficult to get a definitive pricing for this now, since we don't really know the scope of the program as of yet. I've I've had multiple conversations with the county's prior contractor, who now is no longer their their vendor. They're they've changed, they're they're changing vendors. And so we are looking at pricing that would enable us to ride certain contracts, competitively big contracts. If we decided to go with the villages contractor, which is the county's prior contractor, we could do so. But they need a scope a little bit more defined for for them to be able to determine what pricing they can extend to us. And and so without knowing that right now, we have some idea of what it would be and the conditions that would be attendant to a contract. I I haven't been able to get a hold of anybody from the county's new vendor, Vitronic. I likely would have to ask the ATEU folks who that is. And I'm not sure it's appropriate to do that as of yet. But I would note, and as I've told Barney before, you know, I and and as was reflected in the memo that I submitted to the council when we first discussed this option or idea of of standing up our own program is that there are significant legal and regulatory hurdles that we have to cross here. And to do that for one camera is a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of paperwork and a lot of hurdles, regulatory and legal, we'd have to, we'd have to cross. Obviously, ideally, it would be great if the county would do this for us. If not, and and we wanted to go it on our own, I think we should at least, I can continue the this investigation into potential contracts and vendors. But as I've suggested before, you know, now and 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 push for a temporary, at least temporary speed camera on Bradley. But for any permanent solutions, I I think we should obviously take a a stepped approach here, an incremental approach, if you will. Because certainly if if SHA deploys and implements many of these improvements along along Bradley, we could see a significant reduction in speeds and an instance there, which might obviate the need for a speed camera. So I think we need to consider a an incremental approach here. But I have been looking at vendors and contracts. It's just that we can't finalize many details right now until we have a scope and until we know what, how we're going to proceed and in what timeframe we're going to proceed.
Is the scope the number of cameras or what?
Basically, yeah, basically.
Is and forgive me, it's a it's a fixed location? So, for example, Connecticut Avenue also has some, you know, issues, if you will. If, let's say, they they did such an outstanding job, we ordered one, they did such an outstanding job for Bradley, could we take it over to Connecticut?
Yeah, absolutely, we could. I think they need to know initially what the scope is, they can extend pricing to us. If we're only willing to do one, and then others may or may not come online or to fruition, then I don't know if they're going to extend that same pricing to us. That's been competitively bid, and they've extended to the village, for example. So I don't really know, we need an initial deployment idea before we get some some fixed pricing. But yeah, we can expand the program, certainly. But they would need to know in some realm what our scope is and whether we intend to extend it to Connecticut or East West Highway for that matter. And and in order to to secure that pricing. And so, but yes, it's a, it's a, it's an extendable or expandable program. It's just that I don't know if we have any intention of doing that or if there is an appetite among the council or others to 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 consider additional speed cameras other than those that might be deployed on Bradley.
No, I wasn't thinking about additional cameras, I was thinking about a camera that would then be moved.
Oh, wrote, oh, I see, I see. Well, we had asked, we we all along, we've been asking for a permanent camera to be installed on and installed on Bradley. There would be a temporary one while they change vendors, but we've always all along asked for a permanent camera to be installed on Bradley, not a temporary one that can be moved among locations. That might change. You know, as I said, depending upon what SHA's improvements do and what our what our ability to record the the efficacy of the improvements might be, we could always rotate a camera on multiple locations among multiple housing units. But we don't really know quite yet.
Yeah.
Can't really get firm pricing and an idea of firm scope right now.
Any comments from my colleagues? I'll express two concerns, I guess. One is, notwithstanding the efforts to get Delegate Solomon and Councilmember Friedson engaged, there's been nothing impressive whatsoever from the Automated Traffic Enforcement Group. And the second, I'll repeat that we don't know how, even with with the best of will that SHA could show, and they are showing some very goodwill in this draft report, we don't know when they would actually undertake this work. They might want to, they might want to dovetail it with whatever plan they have for for repaving that stretch of road. And maybe that's two years from now, I, we just, we just don't know. So I guess the question I have, and I just, you know, musing on it now, Todd, it's not something we've discussed, is whether we can get a vendor to put in what essentially would be a temporary camera. In other words, we want a speed camera, we'll go through it, program, but we'll, we want to know we can actually get something on the north side of Bradley and and be able to have control over it in the event that the county really doesn't, the police department doesn't help. And and if it turns out that there's a long wait before we can get the SHA to make their improvements. I just, I just feel like we need to keep pushing on, trying to build our own safety net on this, because I I just feel like we're pushing on a string when we're talking to the Automated Enforcement Group.
There are minimum contract lengths that they would only accept. And so we would have a temporary camera there for many, and quite a number of years, even if SHA, excuse me, even if ATEU decided to act, there is a minimum contract length, they believe it's three to five years.
What is that, what, how many years is that?
I have to go back and look, I think it's either three or five. There's a minimum, I believe it's five years that we'd have to have a contract for for them to. I, we don't even know if they're going to be extend, able to extend, given all the inflationary pressures and everything, extend the competitively bid price that the county, that the village has, depending upon the number of cameras we want. We might actually have to go out on our own to competitively bid this, which would be real, real unfortunate. And so there is a minimum contract length. There would be an idea, it is an indication of what kind of scope we were considering. And and like I said, to stand up our own program and 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 face those legal and regulatory hurdles for one camera, one temporary camera is a lot of work.
Okay.
All all that said about the, even if the county put in a camera on the north side, I'm not convinced that one camera is enough on Bradley.
Yep, good.
So I I think the, you know, we need to continue this discussion after we see what the county has. But I I think we need to at least two cameras on Bradley. And if they're only going to put in one, we're still going to have to make a decision about deploying, or I think we should make a decision about deploying a second camera.
Agree with that.
Yeah, we've looked at options for a second camera, and likely we would need to obtain an easement from a property owner for the for the ideal location of two cameras along that corridor. You obviously don't want to put it close to east or any item at the at the at the polar opposite ends of the highway or the corridor, because traffic is likely coming to a, is slowing down or coming to a stop. And especially during rush hour, there's no need for cameras at either either end of the corridor. Maple is an obvious location, given its configuration. And there's been another location identified as an option, but would require an easement from a property owner. And so there are a lot of, a lot, a lot, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things we need to consider here and a lot of permissions we need to get and 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 contracts we need to let, potentially bids we need to have. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's.
The other day, we need, we need, we, I I take the point that you made, which is that if the SHA did all these traffic calming measures, that will slow the speed of the cars. It is, that is one thing we should, we should remind ourselves is that the county has said that if they feel that the traffic calming measures that are put in are substantial enough, then they will not put in a speed camera. They will say, well, you don't need it at this point. I think what we're seeing in the data in the report is that even though the amount of speeding that is high enough to warrant a ticket is a small percentage, because of the number of cars that travel on Bradley, it's still a lot of cars, so it's still a big deal. And all I can say tonight is I still just want us to push to find different options, because just banging away on the Automated Enforcement Unit, I just don't have a lot of confidence. And I just want us to develop other options and really know how much work's required and how much it would cost, and we can make an informed decision.
When are we going to make the decision about it's going to be this number of cameras? Boom.
Right.
Why, I really think it depends upon a lot of the decisions that are forthcoming in terms of the study that State Highway did.
Yeah.
And and whether the Traffic Enforcement Unit actually commits to putting up a camera.
So I don't. They could stall us for six months as they, as they continue to study whether they're going to do it or not. So I'm just wondering if, as of the law, like as of October 1st, we we legally.
Have the authority.
Can, I I mean, I know there's, there's some hurdles there. So what what's, it's hard for me to understand what the critical path, the decision tree is to say, we're, we're going to do it, we're going to order two of them.
I think the critical path is the the study coming to agreement on what measures we would agree to with on the State Highway Administration study, seeing what they will do. And secondly, whether or not a camera is going to be installed. That's the two critical path items that have to be determined before we can even think about what we're going to do, which is the response to that.
But is there going to be a timeline on them, them making a decision? Meaning if we don't hear from them by October 15th, we're going forward and doing our own thing?
I don't, I don't know.
But that's.
That's a fair question. Yeah. How long will we play out the string, waiting for the for the enforcement unit to tell us whether or not?
The State Highway Administration is to the drafts that we, you know, the recommendations that we make in response to their draft.
Okay.
And.
Well, I'll just put it out there, I would really like us to have some clarity by the end of this year. And I think, you know, if we, if we get our comments back to the SHA in October, we should hear back and then impress them on what they will do and what their timeline would be. But and by the same token, we'll keep on pressing with the enforcement group. But at some point, we got to say we're going to do something.
I agree, but. And and I I just don't know whether that's three months from now or whether that's six months from now. And 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 if you want to put a, you know, kind of an arbitrary deadline of December 31st of this year that we need to do something.
Sometimes deadlines work.
Sometimes deadlines, sometimes deadlines do work, right, so.
Knowing even if it's December 31st, it's still going to take 10 months for everything to get installed.
It's going to take, it, my. Jump in here anytime. My, my opinion about the hurdles, the not just the regulatory hurdles, the training hurdles and the certification hurdles that have to be met, you're at least a year from the time we make a decision to actually being able to implement and having somebody on the staff here or a contractor who can be the compliance officer for this, for the cameras. So you're, you're looking at a minimum of not December 31st, but December 31st of the following year before we'd be able to even implement it ourselves. If we made the decision on December 31st.
That's what I'd like us to re-explore. We could still end up in that that situation.
And we know there's a long lead time for certain technology, that's the ideal technology. There's, there's such a procurement backlog, we know it's a six-month wait for at least the technology to come.
Yeah, we're, we're that, yeah. Well, we're, in the short run, we're going to push for the count, the, using, using the Delegate Solomon and Councilmember Fried, and we hope we'll get a response from the, from the Traffic Enforcement Unit. And we will, obviously, hopefully, continue a good dialogue with SHA, get some clarity on when they can hopefully agree on things and take action.
And I, and I, I think we do need to step up the political pressure on the Traffic Enforcement Unit.
Yeah, well.
And just bear down on them.
The emails, the emails from from Friedson and from Solomon went out last week, so we hope they're responsive. Mary Rainey, we normally don't take comments during discussion, but your hand's been up for a long time. If you want to say something, please show us your face.
Oh, sorry, I'm kind of in the dark here. I I just wanted to say that as someone, I'm trying to show my face. Oh, I have a sticker over my computer. As someone who lives on Bradley between East and West, I just wanted to reiterate how dangerous the road is. It's incredibly dangerous, and it's especially dangerous at night when people are, will go 45, 50 miles an hour trying to make a light. And it, I think as the density in the neighborhood increases, there's going to be more and more resistance from people who are living on the block between Wisconsin and East and all that development and the additional development on Connecticut. And we're going to have more and more cars that are trying to rush to make those those lights at night. We've had accidents where we've lost our power for a number of days because people have hit telephone poles. It's just, it's incredibly dangerous. And I just would urge that we do everything we can to try to pursue the topic of of a, of a traffic, of a, a speed camera there. And one suggestion I would make is that Hillcrest, for example, has a, it it widens as it reaches Connecticut. So that's one area where we could still have a turn from Hillcrest on to Bradley without having to get an easement from a homeowner. And that's, I'll, I'll add.
Thank you. All right, anything else on that topic? Okay. The town will do that, we'll thank them, yes, of course. Well, we're going to send out a note thanking them for the draft, yes, and let them know generally what our schedule. We want to have our discussion tonight first, okay. With permission, in terms of the order, so that we can relieve Ron, not necessarily out of kindness, but it reduces his cost. If we could take item G, which I don't think will be a long discussion, and insert that before we go to the district discussion, which will take longer. So Todd, is it you, how do you want to lead, are you going to lead this discussion on regard to the the gas-powered leaf blower exemption issue? You're on mute, Todd, you're on mute.
Sure, I can, the question is, we we've rebid, as I reported in my manager's report, we've rebid the leaf collection contract for for the next term. And Hughes Landscaping received the contract, we bid the contract in a way, and we had three bidders, and Hughes was the only responsive responsible bidder. Pricing went up as expected. And we also asked for pricing related to the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in case the county council approves an exemption again this year or not using gas-powered leaf blowers. And the delta is about, it's 118 versus 138. It's about $20,000 difference between using gas-powered blowers, which is the 118, $118,000 figure, and and non-use of GPLVs, which is around 135, 138. So there's about a $20,000 delta there. I spoke to John Hughes, the owner of the company, and you know, he said that they were certainly would be willing and 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 able to to not use gas-powered leaf blowers. However, I just wanted to make sure the council was fully aware of what the implications were for that option. John said likely, given the fact that these battery packs will last about an hour in the field with the volume and and weight of the leaves they need to collect, that they'll have to have a chaser truck follow these collection trucks and run a generator on the back of them to charge all these battery packs as the, as the trucks and the crew move through the town, which is going to create, and Barney can tell you firsthand, it's going to create a tremendous amount of noise to have a generator, not to mention the fact they can still use the leaf vacuum on the back of their trucks, which isn't exempt from this county noise ordinance to collect the leaves. And that generates more noise than the gas-powered leaf blowers do themselves.
I've got to interrupt to explain why Todd's reference there to, I know firsthand, he and Todd and I were discussing this when I was walking my granddaughter in a stroller up in Germantown about last week. And and the, I was walking right by one of these landscapers that had a Gen Set that I was using to. The Gen Set was making enormous amount of noise just when I was on the phone with Todd. So it was an incredibly appropriate, on-point, timely example.
So that is, that is the implication, you know, careful what you ask for. But the, my other concerns, of course, is that I don't doubt Hughes can collect the leaves with, whether they be by hand, by rake, that's going to be a pretty difficult effort when. That's going to be a pretty difficult effort when it rains on these leaves and the piles of leaves that we get in the town. But I know have no doubt they can do it. They're going to obviously have to put the manpower to it or the people power to it and the resources they'll need for it. And which is why we're seeing this increased cost. But I'm just worried that they won't be able to keep on schedule. We have a pretty aggressive and aggressive and 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 robust program where we clear leaves off the town streets, all the town streets once a week for two months. It's going to be pretty tough to do that. I think I, in my opinion, it's going to be pretty tough to stay on schedule. Nonetheless, recognizing that there's a county ban and the county council didn't approve an exemption for landscapers was a little different than what we're considering right now, which is is an exemption from a municipal contractor. I just want to get the councils on, you know, the determination or feedback of us how we should proceed. We could, we could say you can use G P L Bs for this season and pay 118,000 or no use them to pay 135 to 38,000 and but obviously have to have to us put up with the repercussions here about this additional noise being generated by, you know, a chaser truck with a generator on it, charging these batteries all day. So that's all I really I just, you know, I just need the council's feedback of us.
One question, as of now, they actually use there, there are two workers who are pushing the leaves into the vacuum, one of whom has a battery powered leaf blower. Usually the other has the gas powered leaf blower. They don't currently have a truck, so I guess they have enough batteries that they have to last the day in the town. If they only need, if only one worker has a battery.
Yeah, I think once the correctly, I think what they probably carry a multiple battery packs, but once all those run out, they just revert, they just revert to gas card.
There's reverse to gas powered leaf blowers. Yeah, probably.
The only, the only, the only snafu in this process, if the council really didn't want to exempt our contractor again for another season, we'd have to do we'd have to introduce a couple of ordinances. One is to extend our exemption that we currently have. But the other is to exempt the town from the county's noise ordinance, the specific section regarding landscape equipment. And in order to do that, you know, you'd have to effectively, I mean, but by the time you introduce them, it becomes effective, leaf collection season is going to be over. So and Ron, unless you think we can introduce them as emergency pieces of 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 as emergency ordinances in October and have them become effective, you know, six days later, which is when the leaf collection season will begin. That is, you know, a hurdle we need to address if the council strudges is to say, yeah, let's exempt our contractor from 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 this ban for another from our ban for another season, we'd have to do a two step process. Extend our exemption in our ordinance and then exempt ourselves temporarily from the county's ban on gas powered leaf blowers.
Yeah, given the timing and the new information about the tag along generator, I think the ordinance could be adopted as an emergency measure with immediate effect at the October meeting.
Okay, that's good.
No, I mean.
May I follow up just with one question? They can introduce an ordinance in a little public hearing at the same meeting as an emergency piece of.
Yes. Yeah. So the charter provides that normally you introduce an ordinance and you hold it over for six days before adoption and it becomes effective 30 days after that. Both of those time requirements, the six and the 30 days can be suspended in the event of an emergency. It just does require four affirmative votes of council members. So you can't pass that emergency ordinance with only three votes. It would take four votes.
Right, right. Thanks.
I'm sorry. So it would be effective immediately after our October meeting or only 30 days after?
Effective immediately.
Immediately. Yeah, the the exemption was October 15 through December because that's the and the season for the use. So you could have it affected immediately at your October meeting as Todd said a week later.
Well, I guess we could take it up next year in a more orderly way if we wish to extend it further. I think at the moment I wouldn't want to take up an emergency ordinance for more than just the season. Yeah, yeah. I don't think this is an unusual situation.
But the the issue isn't going to go away.
No, but I just think if we if we if we want to contemplate it being longer term, I'd like to do it with a more fully ventilated process. Whereas for this particular case, which is going to be so compressed. No pun intended. Correct. For this particular process, I think I prefer to keep it very focused just on the season right now and then we'll take it up. And on Tamara, you're going to have to have some discussions with your committee, which may not.
Yeah, they they commented to me because I was still liaison when this whole thing came about and they the chairs, the new chairs were absolutely, you know, do whatever you have to do to get it to be battery powered leaf blowers, even if it's more expensive or whatever.
It it to me, it's not a question of more expensive.
Correct. Yeah, there wasn't this additional information about carrying the game, the generator. So I think.
On an environmental or a noise benefit.
Correct. So this it's going to need to be adequately communicated to the county climate environment committee as to the why behind this whole thing. Because I I don't see the logic.
Do you? Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we do need a motion. Yeah.
I I move that we what bring up the for.
Ron, do you want?
Ron to prepare an ordinance for the October meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, Ron, can you restate exactly what we're voting on?
Sure. It's a motion to direct me to prepare an ordinance to extend the exemption from the gas powered leaf blower ban for town employees for one more season and to exempt application of the county ban with respect to town employees for one more season.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And I'd like to make sure that Todd, when you draft the reporter, we're going to have to explain this in the reporter. Okay. And I think that that point that we what we've learned is really pertinent new information is Rich said is that the we would have to be charging Gen Set truck would have to follow that would I mean, we have to explain this, otherwise it's just going to surprise people and and I want to make sure that they they see the reason why we're taking this vote. Okay, thank you, Ron. I guess there's no other matter that requires your presence, so we'll let you stop the meter.
Good night.
Okay, good night. Thank you very much. Okay, on to Ridge Street and West Avenue improvements. I'd like to separate those two, take Ridge Street first and and let Dave, I think you probably should lead us in a bit on that. And then I'm going to turn it to Rich to talk about our what's going on on West Avenue.
Sure. So the proposed Ridge Street improvements, we received a request back in the beginning of January to extend a sidewalk along one side of Ridge Street to make a complete stretch of sidewalk all the way from East Avenue to West Avenue. We talked about this a little bit back in June. And at that meeting, you know, it was decided that we would have a public meeting with residents on the block to sort of get their opinion and feedback on some draft plans that we prepared. So that meeting did occur. Subsequent to that meeting, everything moves a little bit slower in the summer, just based on everybody's availability. But we've updated a plan. We've done some air spading to identify, you know, if there are tree root issues that we need to take into consideration as part of a sidewalk installation. We've met back with the most affected residents on this block to sort of determine sidewalk width options. We've met with them and our landscape contractor to look at retaining wall plans and locations. Just to make sure that, you know, we can develop a sidewalk and a plan for the work that's attractive and satisfactory to them. So I think at this point we have a pretty good consensus with the most immediately affected residents on a plan that I think they will find agreeable through a public hearing process. So I think the next step likely is to I need to do a little bit of plan modification based on some very recent discussions that we've had. And then, you know, see if the council wants to take it to public hearing, probably in October. In which case we'd need to get notices out to people in the block in the next, you know, week or two weeks to give them a chance to to review plans, ask questions in advance of the hearing.
Thank you. Rich, do you want to add to that?
Oh, I I I think we're we'll be ripe for this discussion or a public hearing in October.
That'd be, that'd be great. I I want to thank you, Dave, for persevering through the summer with the the what? What's the expression? The root spading or the?
The air spade.
Air spading, air spading. I thought that was great to really give comfort that the canopy trees would be protected. And and also to meet with the residents as you have several times, including this afternoon for a long meeting to make sure that they were well informed and felt comfortable with the result. I will mention to the council that we are undertaking a series of of and and agreeing to the requests of residents for the kind of landscaping improvements they would wish to have in terms of retaining walls, in terms of they're different on the different properties. And in terms of the width of the of the sidewalk, it will vary depending upon exactly where it is. It'll never be less than three feet. Some places it'll be out to four feet, other places three and a half feet. But it will be wide enough to support safe walking. And it does not move the curb at all, which was one of the major requests of the residents who felt very strongly that the street should not be narrow. So I I I hope that we have successfully navigated this, but we'll find out. In any event, the in getting is there a consensus then? I don't know if we have to vote. Is there a consensus that we would want to have a public hearing in October? I think that's our view. So it'd be important to finalize those plans and distribute it. Then we'll call for the public hearing in October. And the the we please notify the developers of those two new homes. I want to make sure that they and they pass it on to anybody who's bidding to buy those homes that they know that we're going to have a public hearing on October 8th and and frankly, or unless we see brand new information, none of us have, we're likely to approve this. But I want to make sure that there's no surprise in their marketing their homes that those sidewalks are likely to go in.
Yeah, I've been in contact with them as the reviewing of the plans have progressed. So they're they're aware that it's likely coming to public hearing, but I let them know.
That's great. Good.
Assuming that it is approved or, you know, how long is is it going to take with between the retaining walls and putting in the new stairs and, you know, how how long would time elapse to until it's done?
Yeah, it's hard to say. Much like the concrete work we're trying to do over on Leland Street, a lot of it's going to depend on how quickly we can mobilize our concrete contractor. If they're already here, they might be able to tag it on to the work they're already doing. I'm going to just need to coordinate the retaining wall installation and the landscaping work. There's going to be some test pitting involved. Once we sort of get ready to go under construction. Because, you know, obviously there's the hill there that we're digging into a little bit.
Right.
And all of the utilities for those houses should be at elevation where installing a sidewalk and a retaining wall footer should be clear, but you never really know until you start digging. So we'll have to have the utilities marked and dug down to where they're located and just to make sure that we don't have any surprises. And if there's something that we don't expect that we run into, you know, we'll have to revise plans to accommodate those utilities or you know, adjust the height of them depending on what utilities are. But I'm not anticipating any real problems.
So that's, as I'm hearing, that means that we'll need to have some extra communication to the Ridge Street residents at least as to the progress on a week by week basis, right?
Yeah, once they get started, I mean, it should go pretty quickly. You know, it's not a huge run of sidewalk, you know, the retaining walls in front of each property are you know, probably a week for each of them, but they can assign two crews. Given the traffic situation over there, there's going to be a lot of notification and, you know, parking restrictions on one side of the street to accommodate work on the other side. So there's going to be a lot of sort of handholding and then public notification that we'll need to do, but the actual length of the construction, once it starts, shouldn't be more than two or three weeks.
Okay.
Good, good. Dave, do you have a quick comment? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. As part of the public hearing process, there's a notice that goes out at least 15 days in advance. So.
It'll go to other other residents on Ridge Street, not just to those two homes. That's the point.
Correct. Yeah, the sidewalk policy requires notification of everybody on the block.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Good. That's that's very good to hear the progress. I'm very glad you've been able to work things out with the two residents. That's very important.
Fingers crossed. We're good for now. Tomorrow's a different day.
Okay, Rich, let me turn over discussion on about issues on West Avenue and where we are and where we're not.
I wish you wouldn't turn it over. West is has has been a concern for a while now and I I my suggestion is we we look at it in kind of three separate tranches. One is a fairly what I call simple, hasn't been simple, but a simple issue of changing the signage from stopping, no, no parking to no parking, no standing. That's kind of an issue that I think we can deal with very quickly and maybe have a public hearing in October about. The second tranche of things is the traffic calming measures, the speed, stop sign, curve, speed bumps. We've had a preliminary or we've had a report from the traffic engineer on the speed and the the stop sign. We haven't talked about the other traffic calming measures yet. So that's a that's another set of things we need to 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 think about. And then the the third thing is the realignment of West. It's another kind of big issue that we need to think about as well. And that's so that's kind of three things that I I I think if we look at them in those tranches, we can probably work our way through them. The first one, I think there, I I don't know, but I'm assuming we have a consensus for the stop signs, at least changing the stop sign to from no parking to no standing. And we we ought to be able to put that on.
We do want to talk about that with the school tomorrow, but I.
But yeah, we we can't. I I was going to mention it, but before we get to the other two more complex issues, we've we've set up a meeting with the school. And you and I are going to meet with the school and Dave and Dave. Excuse me. And I think, what was the date? I think Monday, Monday, this coming Monday, isn't it? And so we'll get get some feedback from them. And then the Public Service Committee has actually got it, the whole issue on their agenda. So excuse me, I'll be talking to them on next Tuesday is their meeting at seven o'clock. So we'll talk through the kind of the second two issues. The traffic calming issue and the realignment issue and see how we they suggest we proceed with those.
Okay, I think the and the I I think I agree with you and that's important for West to be able to break up the issues. So we're dealing with things specifically. And I I agree that the issue of of strengthening the signage, so there's no standing and no stopping is a discreet issue, which certainly has been raised and something we could probably deal with. So I I would suggest that following our meeting with the school, if we don't hear any, you know, we have to, I just want to hear what they have to say. I think that was our commitment from our in our council meeting back in July that we would talk to the school about all these issues before we we took action. But if we're confident comfortable that we still want to take this action after our meeting, we would notify the council and suggest that we have a public hearing about it in October on specifically that issue of of strengthening the signage for those two spots, which currently no parking between the residents and the and and Bradley and make it no strengthen that to say it's no standing and no, no stopping.
So I I had a question about that when it when it came up earlier. I can can someone clarify? Even with those signs, delivery trucks don't have to abide by them.
No, it's it, no.
Like, that's what I understood, that even. Like, that's what I understood, that even delivery trucks or or mailmen or
Parking is statutorily different than stopping or standing. So you're standing if you are sitting in your car, you know, parked there, or even it's sort of in the vicinity of your car. So potentially, and it's a little bit of a gray area, you know, running a student into the school and coming back out very quickly probably would be considered to be standing under the Maryland code. No stopping means you can't have a car stopped or parked there ever. So there is a distinction between stopping, standing and parking.
Okay. Um, so if a I'm specifically thinking about delivery vehicles, the Amazons, the, you know, UPS, so they could not stop period there. They would be ticketed if they if they.
It would be enforceable. Whether they would be ticketed is their discretion enforcement capability.
The police officers.
But yeah, I mean, if we post no stopping signs, then it would be illegal for anybody to ever stop a vehicle there.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Sorry, Dave, one very quickly. Can we do that another time, please? I'm sorry, but we are, you know, enforcement is important, but Understood. You're also able to write. For the record, we actually have stepped up and Todd, you can speak to this. We have had police officers at West a great deal more frequently over the last several months than we had previously. Isn't that right?
Yeah, that is correct. And that is evidenced and and documented on the police reports we receive every month. They have stepped up enforcement and written quite a number of citations there.
We can always do more. So that that is one issue that we're going to try to get going and get onto as a public hearing in October. On the second set of issues, the maybe I want to take, we can make a comment on the third set first about the alignment issue. By aligning, you meant the widening issue is okay. The the let me just express my own view about it, but I open up for the conversation. The recommendation that had come from staff was that we looked to widen the street by a couple of feet, knocking out the distance between the curb and the sidewalk. More or less from close to Trader Joe's up until Ridge, really. Didn't go, we weren't, there were, there's the 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 street narrows in kind of a very narrow pie shape, if you will, very narrow V. And then it comes to the to the far side of Ridge Street and then cuts back in and is wider at that point. And so the recommendation from staff had been to widen the street on that sliver. There was no further widening contemplated further toward Bradley. None at all between Ridge and Bradley. That was never part of the plan, just to clarify that for everybody. It was only that sliver that goes closer from starting closer to Trader Joe's as far as as where where the sliver really ends, which is at Ridge. And the the question that we came up with when we met with residents was, okay, we kind of understand there's a problem, which is when people are parking on the east side of of West Avenue and at the same time, people are queuing to pick up their kids, that that leaves a single lane, which is quite narrow, and staff were concerned of a potential accident with cars traveling in that corridor during those hours. So the question was how to offer enough additional space for cars to pass comfortably in that circumstance. And staff had recommended that we widen the street. When we met with residents, a number of residents said, well, alternatively, why don't we simply eliminate the parking for those those spaces between Ridge and working north toward toward Walsh? Because that's that's the area of road we were talking about. Again, we were not talking about the area of West closer to Bradley, but the area from Ridge back up toward Walsh. The observation I'd like to make to 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 my colleagues is that I think we all know from our experience that that parking is a very sensitive issue. And that when residents have been approached and asked to give up parking spaces, it is a very sensitive matter and often we see a lot of opposition. I personally would be uncomfortable in the council taking action in regard to how to solve this problem. If we were to move to eliminating the parking on the north side, which would very directly affect the new home and the resident who will move into that new home, who would be losing the parking spaces in front of their home. And I would be reluctant to have us take that issue up and resolve it with a potential outcome of denying them their spaces when they haven't moved in yet. I feel the appropriate time for us to discuss it is when there are residents there, they can express their views, just like any resident should have that right. So one of the things that Dave has mentioned is that the, as a practical matter, no matter what we do with, if we were to think of widening as an alternative, we wouldn't do that till the end of the school year anyway. So this is not an action that we would take promptly, would take we want to do it over the course of this calendar, this this year of the council. I don't want to kick it down the road, but it's not something that has to be resolved immediately. And I think I would prefer, and I want to ask your thoughts of basically taking that matter up when we know that residents are there and can speak on behalf of their interests of parking.
Yeah, and I I I think, as I said, I was going to at the meeting of the PSC, I was going to go through those kinds of and I I think their recommendation would be that that we don't, you know, we don't look at the realignment chunk, realignment or eliminating parking chunk until somebody's there and we can get their input. So and I will do that.
Okay, okay. Then the second issue was was
The traffic.
Oh, the traffic calming. And and I think there the first I we haven't, we this report came just a few, you know, a little while ago, but it was summertime. I don't have any problems in releasing that. And I I should check with town staff. That's that's basically public, right? We have no reason to.
Yeah.
Put that out there and let residents take a look at the data from the speed study they did and his and Joe Kuto's recommendation. We ought to put that in the public domain.
Yeah, and I but I would caveat it too. He, we we actually had him only look at really two things, speeding and the stop sign.
Correct, yeah.
And essentially what his conclusion about speeding was, there isn't any, essentially. But and this and the stop sign, he's for various reasons, he says, you know, that's not a, that's not a good solution to to slowing the traffic on that street anyhow. So that's only part. I mean, the other issues were things like the speed bumps or something along the street. So we need to and I I would ask the committee to kind of give us a scope of what we ought to be looking at in addition to the study. So if we put the study out, we need to tell people that this is not we're going to continue to look at the traffic calming on the street and and other options that may be available.
Right, right. And we have taken, we have used, you know, we certainly have speed bumps in a lot of places in town, and we've often used that as a something as part of a package, which goes with other things that addresses concerns. So that's out there, too. Okay, is there anything else on at the moment?
The the meeting that you have on Monday, is there going to be a report out? Okay.
Sure, basic, basic outcomes, yes.
Yeah, and I know you raised this specifically, Irene. Part of the things that we're going to look at, you know, was the sort of use of the parking lot.
Yes, that's one of the major
If there are other options to to the
West Street altogether is one of the main topics we want to discuss.
So we're going to go over that with them and see, see if they can work with us to come up with any alternative. So.
Just as a point of information, I did find out in looking at that parking lot is controlled by Brandeis scarf, all those lots, all those parking spaces. They now give permission to the school, the the church and Kia across the street to use some of those spots. But it's it's under their control. And so, you know, if you know, it's just a point of information for you.
Okay, and that those are leased by the church and then subleased by the school, so.
Have there ever been discussion of connecting that parking lot to West?
I don't think there was ever serious discussion about it because of
Dee knows. Okay, Dee, what's been the answer on that?
It was part of the, well, it was actually part of planning for when the person who owns that, who used to own that lot before Brandeis scarf, I guess they now have control, wanted to build a tower there.
Jaffe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there was a talk, there was talk about putting through road where the parking lot is now. Everybody in the neighborhood was surprised.
Okay.
It was a big problem.
Okay. Just curious.
I think the idea of parking in the left of the church is much better solution. The, if I can give you a little more insight about the the line was part of the of that first lot of Ridge.
Why you share that with us in writing? Thank you. So really, we are already at nine twenty five. We have more topics to go over. So I think, is there anything else on on this topic? Sure, Senator Rich. Yep, that'd be great. Thank you. And me, I'm happy to read it too. We'll all read it. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Purple Line Lighting. Todd already referred to this in his presentation. So just very, I'll just quickly summarize. He and I have been actively engaged in this. And the fact is that these are two lamps that went in there that were, we were surprised to see, but the neighbors were very surprised to see. Irene was involved in this too when she was mayor. And it's because the county Department of Transportation approved the design of these lots, of these lights in 2018, but did not inform anybody they'd done it. So the Purple Line went ahead and installed them. We now know for a certainty that the vendor can provide lights that will shield. That's good. And we now want to get a plan in place for how and when they can be installed. And the the specific detail, and this is something that came out in the course of the said that the tour that we had of the Purple Line. The specific issue is that the is the timing of who's going to control the Capitol Crescent Trail when? The plan is to open it in the summer of 2026. Everyone's agreed with that. That's good. We all want to see it open. However, we know that the final construction and won't really now be complete until end of the first quarter of 2027. And the final testing and commercial operation is not scheduled until the end of 2027. So we had heard, and Irene and I heard this from the Department of Transportation in the county, that their preference was, yes, open the trail, we'll take on minimum maintenance, but we're not the owners. We're not going to take ownership until December of 2027. What I clearly heard when we were being briefed about this point by last week was that the Purple Line understandably says, once we open the trail, not our, not our property any longer. So so while we don't intrinsically care what, you know, the ownership structure is over that 18 month period, we care insofar as we want to know whom we have to work on to get the lamps installed with the shields so that the neighbors are protected. And and the county's position has been, we don't want to have anything done until we are the owners. And and of course, we don't want to get trapped in a massive change order process. And that was a specific point that I raised with Ray Biggs when I saw him last week was, look, if the town just goes and buys these lamps, can you guys just get them installed and don't put us through a change? And he sort of looked at me like, I get it, I get it. We'll see what it can do. We'll see. But anyway, that's where that issue stands at the moment. And so we we know there's a solution. That's the good news. But the timing of when we can get it done and whom we actually have to work with is still uncertain. Todd, is there anything I left out there? Does that take care of it?
You got it all. That take care, that takes takes care of it.
Okay. Then let me turn it over to you, Irene, for the Climate and Environment Committee.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the next CAT meeting for Purple Line is is coinciding with the Town Council meeting. But it's it's six to seven thirty where our our council meeting would start at seven.
We should be okay.
So that was one of the things that, because there's been some graffiti on our side of already on 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 the wall, on the noise wall. So I'm just no, on the on the on the trails, I'm sorry, on the tracks side. So if you're no, it's on the other side of the wall. But it's still, you know, a a kind of interesting question about maintenance. Who's responsible for that? Because if you're going to open up the CCT before the train is operational, then there's just that much more chance for problems like graffiti to occur and therefore who's responsible for that. So that I just thought that that would be a question that would need to be brought up in 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 terms of the CAT meeting. But that's all I wanted to say about it.
Well, thank you for mentioning the the conflict of dates. I had not appreciated that. So we should be able to join for at least the first hour.
Yeah, the email went out yesterday and the Bethesda Chevy Chase one just happens to coincide, but it's six to seven.
Yeah, an hour should be enough. They do give us, well, certainly here the presentation, they usually allow us to ask early questions. We can try to we can use our influence with Purple Line to be able to make sure we're in the front. Carlo, what were you going to add?
With the Purple Line wanting to hand over ownership and the county not wanting to receive ownership, does that put the use of the trail at risk for that 18 month period?
Good question. The the I and all I can tell you was when I was pushing on that point, not not that it was at risk, but I was pushing on the point of who, what's going to happen here. I simply got, we're in discussion, we're in discussion. So I I think I will only say this in my my incurably optimistic view of life that they have made such a point of opening it next summer. And the politicians have all heard that that if suddenly they said, well, we can't resolve ownership and therefore we're not going to open the trail. I I think that's going to be a pretty tough position for the parties to carry.
It's hard for me to believe the Purple Line would continue owning it when it's being
I have sympathy with the Purple Line's perspective on that, that once once it's open to the public, the county has to take over operation. They they claim that, in fact, Irene and I were on the phone with Todd when they made this representation, that they would have an agreement similar to the one that apparently they have right now with the Sleaford Tunnel. That the the tunnel is open. So obviously, people can use it, but there's, you know, there's still some nebulous agreement about county maintaining it lightly, but not in control of the land. But the taking over the CCT entirely is a very different animal. It's not really an applicable comparison. So I think you're we'll find out. But anyway, that's that's going to be, we'll have to watch that, watch that space. Okay, Climate and Environment Committee survey.
Yeah, so Tamara, please come on in when, if you want to, but yeah, this started out when last year. So this has been going on for a while. And since since perhaps it's the first time that you all are really diving in to see the survey. The intent here is to to distribute a survey to residents that the Climate and Environment Committee has a better understanding of the types of events and the and the educational events, as well as other kind of information incentives, whatever, that residents want to have in order to be more sustainable, right? This survey, you can, the way this was attached is you, because there's a decision tree format. You can go ahead and take it online directly, but obviously the the this selection of answers you give then then dictates the next question. Or you can look at here and hard copy and see all the different questions. One thing I do want to note, and I didn't notice this until just a few seconds ago. The last council felt that that providing an incentive of gift cards was not an appropriate way to gather information. I felt that this allows for a greater number of people that we hear from versus those that are going to be I don't want to be led astray, if you will, in terms of we really want I don't want to be led astray, if you will, in terms of we really want this, and then you find out later on after all the work that ninety-nine percent of people didn't want that. So it is what it is. We're not going to put in any sort of incentive for people to take the survey, but the the goal is to release the survey October for October first. So it would be in the forecast, it would be obviously distributed, but I wanted to make sure I gave you guys a chance to to see this one more time. If there's anything else that you want shifted, changed, edited, or whatever.
For all of us, frankly.
That's for all of us, yeah, to kind of speak ups so that we can meet this deadline. And obviously for to make the forecast, we're looking at, you know, next week.
Put it out as the committee.
As the committee.
It's not something we you know, it's actually a committee piece of work. It's not, it's not the council's piece of work.
I see. Okay, okay. With the obviously expressed consent of the council.
Otherwise, they couldn't put it out, so.
Yeah, okay. But it's the committee's work, yes.
Committee's work, that's right.
Absolutely.
And it'll help inform them in terms of the programs that the the that they planned undertake over the coming year.
Like to keep it open two, three weeks, and then they can start crunching the numbers on on based on that. Is there anything else that came up that should be included?
You know, I wasn't at the meeting because I was.
Yeah, you were traveling. I'm sorry. Okay. I've had just a little bit of communication with the with Michelle Grace, one of the co-chairs, and they're ready to, you know, communicate as necessary, but really need to make sure that you all are are on board and in terms of everything. So that was it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One one last item very quickly. The we had received a several letters, Todd had, from a resident very concerned about our setting the required width for ADA compliance in terms of cutting back vegetation at the three-foot level. Uh, and this resident felt very strongly that it should be four feet, and particularly so on Connecticut Avenue. And I actually walked on Connecticut Avenue to sort of say, well, is there really a problem there? Because actually, one of the things I realized, and I measured this, that the Connecticut Avenue, the sidewalk is often around six feet. It's actually quite wide. And so even if vegetation is growing over the sidewalk, you probably in most cases still have at least four feet. And but I walked that path before the final bit of trimming was done per the the town guidelines. And so some of that was cut back in any event after my walk. So I've asked, Todd is going to be coming in person to the volunteer party tomorrow, which
Yes.
Nice to have you come. And he's going to walk Connecticut tomorrow and see whether there are any homes that look like there's an issue of being less than four feet, but more than three feet. If there are a few, we'll figure out how we might address that if we wish to. But the first, the first instance is to find out if there's an issue or not and be responsive to this resident's concern. So.
While you brought this up, I I it brings to mind our discussion on Ridge. And the town standard is four feet. I mean, that's essentially what we try to build the sidewalks to. And I think for good reason. It allows two people to walk comfortably side by side. It allows people to pass each other comfortably. It allows you to walk with your dog and not have to have the person that's coming towards you go off off this into the street. So I I I think it's important for us to keep in mind that that is standard. And we do it for not only safety, but for pedestrian convenience as well. And and we ought to try to adhere to it as best we can. That's just a editorial comment.
Well, we did for the for the purpose of enforcement. We set it at three feet, as you know, so. But you made a good point. I mean, we, you know, the standard is four. So I I I I hope Todd will find it is almost universally respected at four, and you may find one or two properties as an issue, but you can just go with some shears and just take care of a spot.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else that, please?
Our potential lawyer for.
Oh, yes, yes. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, sure. So as you you know, we last session or over this last year have additional Land Use Council, Michelle Eisenfeld, who represents a number of municipalities. It's not just us. And the contract is is kind of up for renewal, if that's the right way of saying it. And there's been some discussion as to whether the town would want to sign on again. And it would up in in line with other municipalities as well. I don't personally have any insight as to whether the other municipalities are absolutely going to sign on or not. But I think it's a worthwhile discussion for us to have as to whether we found it to be useful or 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 not, right? There is likely going to be additional legislation, housing, specific legislation introduced in this next legislative session, two thousand and twenty-six, at the state level. Unclear exactly what it's going to be, but there's going to be something. I don't know if there's stuff still in the works for for county council or whatever. But the I guess whether we want to have a start of a discussion tonight or and and put it on deck for October. So I would ask that that we all think about it. You've got my initial thoughts on on perhaps ways that we can ensure there's a bit more, not so much transparency, but just reporting back on in a timely manner on what is happening, because it's once the session begins, it's fast and furious, and I hate for us to be on our 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 heels as we react to things. But that being said, we may not need to get engaged on every single thing that comes across the pike, but just to be informed upfront would be the the goal that I suggest.
Irene, do we pay her on as a retainer or only on an hour of the bill? How does it work?
I thought it was a that's a great question, Todd.
Hourly, isn't it?
I thought so, too.
It's hourly.
And it's split among all the municipalities that sign. And it sounds like the letter we got from from the town manager of the village, that they're probably going to want to do this, right? So if we were to join, we would probably at least have them as well. So we'd be splitting the bill in any event, at least two municipalities.
Right.
I I personally find it very useful that we used to call it a clipping service, somebody that would scan the 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 state, the legislation, and then forward you anything that may be of pertinence to you. I I I don't.
Could do that with ChatGPT these days, too. I mean, let's be clear.
If anybody knows how to use it.
Yeah, but you you could use ChatGPT. If we're if we're talking about just a reporting, you're bringing up an interesting idea here. You could have ChatGPT scanning what is happening at the state level. The 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 difference would be that it's like kind of after-the-fact reporting versus the scuttlebutt that's happening behind the scenes.
I find a lobbyist useful in this particular.
Yeah.
And Todd, what do you, I mean, have you to keep you aware and abreast of those kinds of things coming down, do you think it's useful?
You know, I think it would probably be useful to have a conversation with Ron as well to determine what our options are in in terms of monitoring state legislation related to, you know, the town and related to housing in particular. I mean, you know, Ron's frankly never been tasked with doing this for us. You know, it's it's never been on his radar to 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 do that. But he's brought issues up before to us that have come, you know, across his radar. But if we want to talk to him about how we might best be able to do this, it might be worth that. It might be worth a conversation.
And why don't we do this? Let's let's consider it and put it on the agenda for October. Why don't you, can you let Shayna know that we will take it up in October? So she, because to make sure we're responsive to her. I'm sorry. And then ask, and I guess, and also ask Todd to talk further with Ron about that, and I can join as well in conversation. Okay, good. Great. Anything else, folks? Okay, I can use my hammer. We're adjourned.